Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, September the 4th. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. On behalf of all of my colleagues, we just want to thank everyone who is listening, everyone who is watching, and those of you who are in council chambers. We are going to begin with our opening prayer by Maryelena Rivera.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety, keep us out of harm's way, and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Padre Celestian, nos hemos reunido para manejar los asuntos de nuestra ciudad. Al hacerlo le pedimos su orientación y comprensión. Oramos para que nuestra ciudad alcance un lugar de paz y seguridad, que nos mantenga fuera del peligro y bendecir a los que están en autoridad. Que el respeto sea clave en todos nuestros esfuerzos. Amen.
Amen. And now, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Owens.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Willauer. Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Field. Councilwoman Bracy.
Here.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilman Hackett. Councilman Spadola.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Ten present and three absent.
Thank you. Councilmembers Field, Johnson, and Willauer did ask to be excused this evening. We're gonna have the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting.
August 28th, 2025, City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:31 PM. President Ernest M. Congo II presiding.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll have our City Treasurers' report.
September 4th, 2025, total investments $522,544,689.82. Total cash on hand $15,56,960.11. Grand total $537,601,649.93. Submitted City Treasurer Dwayne Sims.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Also, just as a public note, for any public comment, for anyone who is virtual, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat, and public comment will take place after non-legislative business. I would accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, we're gonna have our recognition resolutions from Councilmember Cabrera. She would like to recognize Catherine Ingram, who is the author of "It's In You: The World Is Waiting." From Councilmember Harley, she would like to recognize Martha Morgan on her 46th year anniversary of Morgans of Delaware. And from Councilwoman Owens, she would like to recognize Monrovia Fashion Week USA 2025. In the way of sympathy resolutions from Councilwoman Cabrera, a sympathy resolution for Fred P. Peany, and a sympathy resolution for John J. Mink from Councilmembers Spadola, a sympathy resolution for John Dana Stant. And that does conclude our sympathy resolutions. This time we're gonna move to public comment. Deacon Earl Tate. Thank you for joining us, Deacon Tate.
Good evening. My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate. He's never late 'cause he don't wanna lose his pair of roller skates. And I'm here, and I'm here to say about, this is it. Last night, last night around my way, there was this crazy driver coming up, coming up just up street, drunk, he was drunk as a skunk, and he was out there driving fast as could be, not caring about anybody, not even caring about himself. He ran into plenty of cars and everything knocked poles down, hit fence, hit fences, knocked it down and everything, and he almost hit one of my neighbors. Now, I'd say it's enough, it's enough. Putting up the stop sign and everything is good, but we still need something else to slow these people down. Even if we had to borrow something from the toll booth, because before you hit the toll booth, they had this little drrrr that'd slow you down, slow you down. That's all we asked for, is to put some of them in some of the places around the city so they could slow these people down, so the people, so that the kids and adults will be here tomorrow to see another day. Because with the way that they've been driving, not many, if they keep this up, they're not gonna be many kids, no adults around. So we got to stop and take a look, not only look, but see and hear and speak up, speak up and do something about it because if the county could have speed bumps put out there, we got to have something put here in certain areas. We're not asking you to put them all over the town. We're asking you to put it in certain areas, certain areas to slow these people down because we wanna live and we wanna see our children grow up nice and big and strong. Thank you.
Thank you. And virtually, we have Christina Kelly. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, and thank you for an opportunity to speak. I would like to speak today about the recent news articles about the January shooting of Calvin Warren. I'm here today because the recent shooting demands accountability. Mr. Warren stated he did not know the unmarked SUVs approaching him were even police vehicles. That confusion happens all too often and alone should raise serious alarms about current policing tactics and the policies this body has the power to oversee. City Council is not just a budgetary body, it is an oversight body. You have both the authority and the responsibility to hold the Wilmington Police Department accountable when their actions put lives at risk. This means demanding transparency about the use of unmarked vehicles, ensuring clear identification protocols are followed, and convening independent review processes when tragedies like this occur. And let's be clear, Wilmington already has a police accountability board on the books, but it has yet to meet. That inaction alone sends a message to the public that accountability is optional when in fact it must be a priority. This council has the ability to change that, to activate the board, and to demonstrate to residents that oversight structures are not just symbolic, but real. Without councils' leadership, the community is left with unanswered questions, eroding trust in both law enforcement and city government. Accountability cannot be optional. It is necessary to protect residents and rebuild confidence in our public institutions. I urge this council to exercise its oversight authority, call for a full and independent review of this incident, and ensure WPD's policies and practices put public safety first. Wilmington deserves a police department that operates transparently and a council that stands up for its people. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude public comment. We want to thank everyone who did speak this evening. And as always, you're always welcome to speak at all of our official City Council meetings every first and third Thursdays of the month. Now, we will move to legislative business. Councilmember Darby.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-049, agenda number 0103. An ordinance to amend Chapter 48 of the city code to require applicants appearing before the zoning board of adjustment or the Design Review and Preservation Commission to notify neighborhood planning councils and/or civic associations.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 48 of the city code to require applicants appearing before the zoning board of adjustment or the Design Review and Preservation Commission to notify neighborhood planning councils and/or civic associations.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-050, agenda number 0104. An ordinance to amend Chapter 48 of the city code to require applicants seeking building demolition or minor or major waterfront development projects to notify affected City Council members.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 48 of the city code to require applicants seeking building demolition or minor or major waterfront development projects to notify affected City Council members.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Yeah, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Just wanna make a note, those two items are going to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance number 25-051, agenda number 0105. An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to expand the qualifications of members of the Wilmington Community Police Accountability Board and increase compensation for board members.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the city code to expand the qualifications of members of the Wilmington Community Police Accountability Board and increase compensation for board members.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember McCoy.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-052, agenda number 0106. An ordinance to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract 26008 PD police clothing between the City of Wilmington and McDonald Uniforms Company, Inc.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract 26008 PD police clothing between the City of Wilmington and McDonald Uniforms Company, Inc.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee. This time, we will move to petitions and communications. Councilmember Owens.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Darby.
Nothing tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank all my City Council members who contributed towards Milli Cannon concert. It was a very successful. And I'd like to thank all the sponsors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, Mr. President, I got two quick announcements. One, the Blondie Mansion Weekend is going to be this Friday and Saturday, September the 5th and 6th. It's all about culture, connection, and community. It's two days of Blondie Mansion. It's located on 200 West 9th Street, right there on 9th and Orange. The doors open at 7:00 PM, and it actually starts at 8:00. It's gonna be live music, the spoken word, and they're gonna have light bites. So Sarah Crawford, she is behind Blondie Mansion. It's going to be two days of live music, again, performances, and some workshops on Saturday. And then, the second announcement is that Naj and Jay are going to have their fourth annual block party on Saturday, September the 6th, starting at 7:30, from 7:30 to 10:00. This is their fourth annual. They're gonna have a full band, and of course, Naj and Jay are gonna be doing live performances. Last year, it was a lot of fun, and I just want to encourage everyone to just share the information. We have our arts community trying to organize and plan different events for our communities and neighborhoods, and so let's encourage our constituents to go out and to participate. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes, Mr. President. I actually have two meetings coming up. I have the Brown Town Civic Association meeting. That community meeting is gonna be on Wednesday, September 10th. It is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The location is the local fire hall, 1590 at 804 Maryland Avenue. That is a meeting that goes on regularly, monthly, and it's usually the second Wednesday of every month. The other meeting is the Hedgeville Civic Association. That meeting is gonna be on September 16th, which is a Tuesday. That meeting will be at the MSK Community Center at 1009 Sycamore Street. The meeting normally starts at 6:30 and lasts till 8:00 PM. Also, I just wanna state that, thank everyone for reaching out to me about making me aware of what had happened in my district on Labor Day. It is a sad, sad day as we're seeing some of our people still having issues and unable to resolve those issues that lead to gunplay. And I just hope that we're praying for not only just their families, but these young people, that they'll figure out a way to not have to go that route. So I do want to thank all my councilmembers for reaching out and making me aware that they were thinking about me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bracy.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilman Hackett. Councilman Spadola.
Nothing tonight, Council President.
Let's bring back to Councilwoman.
I'm here, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I did not get to the mute button fast enough. I just want to remind people that as we're entering into the kickoff for Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15th, it starts with tomorrow at 11:30 AM, the Latin American Community Center City Council will read "Resolution," starting with the proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month. In addition, I want to remind folks that not this weekend, but the following weekend, September 14th, they will have the Calle Cuatro Hispanic Day Celebration. It starts with a parade at 1:00 PM that starts on Union and 4th Street, coming all the way down to Jackson Street. Feel free to come out, friends, family, anywhere along the parade route to watch and cheer people on. In addition, there will be a short festival right after the parade until, I believe, it's till 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM, right there on 4th Street where the parade ends. So we welcome everyone to come out, enjoy the food, enjoy the music, enjoy the beautiful culture as we always love to share our heritage with others and welcome all. And there will be other activities that I'll announce at the upcoming meetings, so just want to make sure that people partake of that. And a very well-attended and successful event that takes place here in Wilmington is the Brandywine Arts Festival, and that's happening this Saturday and Sunday at Brandywine Park. Again, a great family event to bring the whole family. There'll be a lot of original artwork from different artisans, amazing food. So it's gonna be a lovely weekend, two lovely weekends in Wilmington, so inviting all our residents and others to spread the word, to come out and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to announce our third annual Black Restaurant Week is gonna start on September 28th going through October the 5th. The co-emanating event is gonna be our Black Food Festival, which is gonna be October the 5th, from 12:00 to 5:00. This is a free event. It's gonna take place at the Queen, 500 North Market Street. There will be a celebrity chef appearance, food tasting, DJ, and student cook-off. For more information, please call us at City Council, I want to thank everyone who joined us. Again, if we can help you in any way, please call our City Council office. Again, our number is 302-576-2140. With that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.